...into. Moving on to the next page. Page two, PDF page seven, Statement of Receipts, Disbursements and Changes in That Position. So, the total operating receipts of the authority were roughly 525,000 on a cash basis. This is stormwater fees, penalties, et cetera. Total operating disbursements were 177, roughly 172,000, which included some admin expenses of 84,000 for various salaries, benefits for borough employees who work on the authority. And then, under non-operating, you'll see a $212,000 approximate amount. And this is for what's called a contribution to the borough. So, this is for stormwater projects that were deemed capitalizable to the borough.
So, Justin, let me interrupt you. Let me interrupt you there. That's, that is, that is the Stormwater Authority's contribution to the borough, which, which really means a variety of things that were accomplished and done by the authority that the borough as the parent entity sort of gets credit for. So, that's, that's, in the vernacular, that's real stuff that happened, correct?
Oh, correct, yeah. So, they are, they are authority expenses. And in this instance, they're actual borough assets that the authority is approving.
Right. So, those are our contributions to the borough?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the borough that is capitalizing those is part of their books because they're investments of the borough's assets.
Correct. Now, I don't know if you have this level of detail in front of you, and I don't want to go through chapter and verse, but can you, if you have it in your work papers, what makes up that 212, 031? I would like to make sure that Tammy has it and that Deborah has it.
Okay.
Because, because I think that's important to have that and to track that information from the audit year to year.
I can, I can do that.
Okay.
I believe they assisted, I'm not sure which one or both, they both were very involved with the audit, but I can make sure to send that over to them.
Right. And I'm looking at Deborah. Make sure that I see what that total is, what it, what it comprised of. Okay? Thanks. It's an important number.
The only thing I wanted to mention on the financial statements, on the statement of receipts and disbursements is just the net income was 136, roughly approximately 136,000 in the cap, based on the cash basis of accounting.
Okay.
Now, moving on to the footnotes. We'll start on page three of the report or PDF page eight. Point out, I just want to point out a couple of things here before we go to the DCD report. So, footnote one explains the criteria of why the authority is considered a discreetly presented component unit of the borough. You can read through, there's a, we do checklist, we verify with management that this is still correct, and we go through a bunch of different questions to determine the level at our component unit or they're not component unit. You can read that a little bit. So, long story short, after we do all that checklist work, the authority is considered a discreetly presented component unit of the borough, which just means that the authority then has its own separate column on the borough's financial statements. Footnote one also explains the significant accounting policies that you can read on. Note three, which is on page five or PDF page 10, talks about a management agreement between the borough and the authority where we disclose any payments that are made in relation to this agreement for services rendered, which was 89,192. And then, there's another paragraph below that talks about capital improvements, which again is that contribution to borough number, the 212,000. Finally, in the footnote, note five, on page six of the report, PDF page eleven, talks about commitments related to, so commitment would be anything that the authority has entered into prior to year end for which there's still an outstanding service that has to be rendered or outstanding amount has to be paid. So, we, therefore, we listed the significant ones as of 1231, 21, where there's still a commitment.
So, the commitment of 128,412 will appear in next year's audit. It'll, it'll help comprise whatever the contribution to the borough might be.
Right.
Okay.
Assuming all the work's done in 2022, then obviously that disclosure wouldn't go away, but it would, it would go into that.
Right. It'll, it'll go into that bucket.
Correct.
Along with some other, other things that we will be doing this year. Okay?
Yep.
And Justin, next year, you're going to have comparison year-to-year columns, right? In other words, you'll have 21 and then you'll have 22.
Is that, okay. I don't know that, I can make a note of that.
I mean, that shouldn't be too hard. Right? That way, that way, you know, the reader can see what we did last year in this particular area and what, what we've done the next year or the current year.
Yeah, I'm certain we can probably do that because we already have a couple of years under cash basis.
Right.
To be compared.
Yeah, this is the first year, and you're not going to compare, you're not going to compare cash to accrual. That's crazy, so, okay?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, but I will make a note of that.
Thank you.
All right. And then, that's all I have for the financial statements. And I just want to mention a couple of brief things on the DCD report. Nothing I don't think has to be pulled up. So, in the DCD report, this is a required state filing. And this is also on the cash basis of accounting, so same, same format as the financial statements and prepared on the regulatory basis of accounting in accordance with DCD guidelines. The authority received an unmodified opinion on this as well, which is the best opinion you can receive on the regulatory basis. And that is, that is discussed on PDF page two of the DCD report. So, the numbers are prepared based on the trial balance that we also use to prepare the financial statements and to present in a, in a form prescribed away by the DCD. So, there are certain categories, numbers, and ways that we have to report the numbers according to DCD. So, before I move on to the two letters, anybody have any questions on the financials or the DCD report?
I've asked all my.
No. I don't have any.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Nope. Please proceed.
Okay. So, the next is the management letter. So, just to briefly go over a couple of things in the management letter. So, we, the management letter will, on the first page, talks about how we use, we gain an understanding of our internal control and internal control of the authority in order to design our audit procedures. But we do not opine on the effectiveness of the internal control. However, if we find deficiencies in internal control throughout our audit procedures, we are required to communicate them to the board. There is a paragraph following that talks about a deficiency in internal control that exists when the design of operation of control does not allow management or employees in a normal course of performing their operations or functions to prevent, detect, or correct misstatements on a timely basis. So, material misstatement is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal controls. That it is reasonably possible that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statements will not be prevented, detected, or corrected. And then, I believe the management letter will go into our two comments there, which I will go over briefly. So, the first is a material weakness, just over improving financial reporting. So, throughout the audit, we had various material adjustments that were needed to the trial balance to fully make sure it was converted from accrual to cash basis. The adjustments were provided to management, and then, they were obviously encouraged to be reviewed, to review those adjustments and make sure they're evaluating, to ensure internal procedures are correct. We understand that this, due to the conversion, this does happen, so.
So, I would, I, let me interrupt here. I would not expect this comment next year because this is a one-time deal.
Correct. Typically, you see this comment when the first, you know, when you go through the conversion process.
That's right.
Especially with cash basis, there should be no ARAP. It should be cash in, cash out.
The first time is difficult, and we're over it, so.
Correct.
Okay. Good.
The next one is, the only other comment is another, another matter, as we like to call it, or a best practice recommendation. So, just as we were reviewing disbursements and we were reading the internal control narrative, we just noted that the authority requires two check signatures and that one of those is stamped and the other is live. So, we just recommend to further segregate controls if it's deemed reasonably possible that the checks either be signed by both individuals in person, or if the one live, one stamped, still has to be in process, that the signature stamp is maintained and locked by someone who is independent of the cash dispersion process.
Okay. So, that would be an internal administrative.
Correct. You have someone who, primarily, I would say, who doesn't control, has control of the general ledger, account software, the mailing of disbursements, et cetera.
Would that practice have preceded this current audit year? What was it?
I would.
Yeah.
Is this the usual procedure? Has it been the usual procedure? I sense it has, but, but I don't know.
Well, I was just trying to understand why it came up this year and did in other years.
Right. Well, probably because they didn't check it before this year. Is that true?
And again, it's not, it's not, it's just another, a best practice.
Okay.
So, it's not like, if it's not a material weakness or a significant deficiency, where we're saying you need to really review and evaluate. This is just a recommendation that maybe you might consider doing.
Yeah.
Got it. It's a suggestion.
It's labeled a material weakness, though, right?
Not just signing of checks, no.
Oh, no? Okay. I misread that.
Okay. Okay. Charles, you can take a look at it.
And if you have any questions or anything, Charles, just feel free to reach out.
Yeah, our challenge is always going to be, there's essentially three part-time employees.
Not enough people.
Yeah. So, segregation of duties between who's depositing money and who's authorizing the expenditure, the expenditures of money is.
Yep.
A small universe of three people.
Yeah, it's just a best practice, just to throw the thought out there.
Who else authorized the sign?
Mike, myself, and Wes. Not you?
I think I do.
Oh, Deborah.
Yes.
I did not sign for the authority.
Yeah.
And I probably have the stamp. Is my name the stamp?
Yes. Your name is the stamp.
Because I signed the invoices.
Correct.
I approved the invoices.
That's our internal controls, that the chair of the board sees, sees all the, sees all the bills that are going to go out. Then, Tammy Mordorf, in our accounts payable department, will cut the checks and then, because the chair's already approved the invoices, he gets the stamp. And then, usually, I would be the live signer. And then, in my absence, it would be Deborah.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
That's all I have on the management letter. Does anybody have anything else before I go on to the communication letter?
I think you can proceed.
So, the last letter is the, is another required communication, so it's the communication to those charged with governance letter. Throughout our, this part of our auditing standards, we're required to reach out to a member of board or council and just ask a couple typical standard ISE questions. And that's kind of our oversight as well throughout the audit. So, just a couple of things to kind of run down through this. Our responsibility is to express an opinion about whether the financial statements prepared by management are fairly presented in accordance with the cash basis of accounting. However, our audit of the financial statements does not relieve the board or management of their responsibilities. It's the ultimate responsibility of management. In 2021, we noted new, no new accounting policies adopted, and the application of existing policies was not changed. And we noted no transactions entered into by the authority for which there was lack of authoritative guidance. And all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. We also noted no sensitive disclosures affecting the financial statements. Typically, there are not any on its cash basis. We encountered no difficulties in dealing with management during the audit. I'm over just a little bit in the comment, but we did have a couple of material adjustments due to the conversion. There were no disagreements that arose during the course of the audit. And we are, we requested certain representations, and I say requested because the, we have received the signed management representation letter, and the audit has been finalized. So, in that, it just talks about, the management representation letter just talks about various little things throughout the audit. Sometimes, if management's telling us, you know, we deem this asset to be 15 years, or we deem the collectability to be this, we'll sometimes put specific verbiage in there. Overall, standard boilerplate verbiage as it relates to the audit that needs to be signed and returned before we can finalize. To our knowledge, there were no consultations with other accountants about auditing and carrying matters or second opinions. And we generally discuss a variety of matters throughout the process as part of attention as the auditors. However, we deem all those discussions to be in the normal course of business. And finally, the last section, which I think is new there, is other findings and audit issues, and it just refers back to the management letter, which we already discussed. So, with that, does anyone have any questions on the communication letter or anything in general?
Anyone?
No.
I think it's pretty straightforward and clear. Okay.
All right. Well, if no questions, that concludes the presentation, and I'd like to thank you all for your time and all the borough staff, board members that assist throughout the audit process.
Thank you, Justin.
All right.
And Jennifer. Okay. Take care. Thank you.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay. Any questions from our board? Cash basis is pretty straightforward, so it's, it's, it's not as complicated as accrual and doesn't need as much interpretation. What I'd like to do is get a sense, or I'll, I'll make a motion to accept, as a board, not approve, but accept this audit for 2021. And then, Charles, the borough, when they, when they finalize everything, will have something from us to say, we approve our part.
So, the borough's audit.
Or we accept our part.
Yeah, the borough's audit's already completed, and council's already received.
Okay.
Their presentation.
Okay. Have they voted?
No, there's, there was no, like, formal vote to accept the audit. It's pro forma that they come in and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Present.
If, if the authority is fine with that, then, you know, we've, we've just reviewed it in detail, and that would be, you know, fine with me that we accept it, and that's that. Unless someone wants to have a vote, we don't have to. Okay. We good?
Good. By consensus.
Okay. Consensus vote is that we accept it as presented. All righty.
A quick question. Does this audit live anywhere that the public could see?
Sure. It'll be posted on the authority's page on the, on the borough's website.
And it's, if you go to D C E D, if you go to D C E D, it should be there, too.
Correct. Right.
I'm going to have a hard copy in the lobby and upstairs if someone doesn't have access to the internet.
Yeah, once it gets on our website, then, you know, it's, it's easy, it should be easy to find. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll look at current and old business, revenue versus expenditures, year-to-date.
As predicted at our last meeting, once we hit the month of July, our deficit spending for the first six months of the year quickly reverses, and we end up in a, a net revenue position. And as of July 31st, that is the case where the authority now has a $68,000 and some change surplus revenue over expenses year-to-date. Generally speaking, if you, if you look at the expenses year-to-date, they are in line with our budget numbers. There's a few outliers which may need to be a bit further investigated. Again, our legal expenses, not quite sure exactly how that happened, but we will look at that. Maybe it was just a, a fairly, maybe it was a faulty budget number to begin with, based on Barley Snyder's hourly rate versus the number of hours that, that Adam contributes for the, for the authority. So, we, we can look at that closer at budget time again, reevaluate that. Also, need to look deeper into our internet fees. That might need to be adjusted for the 2023 budget. Generally speaking, though, these are in line with where we expect to be this year. Nothing here highlights to me a red flag that we're going to be out of, out of sync by the end of the year.
Okay.
Talking, looking into our checking. Talking, looking into our checking account, as of the end of July, $432,000 in the, in the checking account, and that is augmented by our CD of $150,000. So the authority remains in a, a very good cash position.
Mm-hmm, we haven't started paying.
Correct, we haven't started paying the big bills yet, but they're coming.
Right. They're coming. Okay, thank you, any questions? If not, Deborah, can you speak to how we're doing on payments for 22?
I surely can, and 2022, we mailed out 18, 1,884 bills. The total amount that we would collect from that would be 515,250. As of today, there are only 566 not paid out of the 1,884 bills that went out in the amount of 123,737 dollars. The total payments received for 2022 is 381,513, and I've collected that probably in 45 days.
Okay.
So we can balk in, they have till August 15th to pay for the discount, and September 30th at face value, as of October 1st, they would be delinquent. And for 2021, the total bill for that year was 514,290, the total paid to date was 505,532. We had 78 individuals that had not made payments for 2021 in the amount of $10,345. As of August 1st, we did mail in a notification, first-class mail and certified, to notify those individuals that accounts are delinquent. We've received 18 payments since the letters went out, and in, in the meantime, for the 2021 payment cycle. So we are down to 60 unpaid parcels, and for 2020, we did have a total of 41 liens, 22 are still outstanding. 2019, we had 45 liens, which 25 are still outstanding. So, and I believe, you know, after August 30th, we're going to give a two-week window roughly before we actually file the liens, because the postal service, you know, insured, something has a little bit late delivery, we don't want to file that lien on someone who's making a payment.
Right.
So that kind of followed up on the liens, I know Adam's not here, and then we did do the proof of publication, that legal notice for the 2021 cycle for the notification for the stormwater audit, and that went into paper on Friday.
Oh, that was in Friday's paper?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Adam's not here today, but he asked us to include a motion to clarify, I guess from his legal mind, the changes that we adopted, which we all approved back in March, and he just wants to clarify the fact that it doesn't apply to 21, 22, but 22, 23 billing cycle. And so, would someone like to make this motion? How about second? Here's the motion, I'll make it, I just read it, pretty much.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions on this? No, okay, all, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, not hearing any, it passes, thank you, Adam will be happy. Yes, he's got a.
John Lawver, did you vote affirmative or opposed?
Affirmative.
Thanks, John. Okay, project updates, Culp's Run Stream, right, stream restoration. Robbie, you want to say anything, and I can add some things, you're, you're right out there, do you walk the project at all?
I have not been there for the past two weeks for the meetings.
Okay, okay.
Looks, it looks really, really nice, they're, they're moving along really well. Even though the rain that we did have, a couple storms, really didn't slow them down much, because they, instead of the matting and the restoration, they can move forward to, to taking down the trees while they're waiting for the water to recede, so they can go back to doing the banks and, and restoring the banks, and, but it's, it's really coming along nice.
It really is, they're making great progress, Pat and I have been attending meetings on and off, depends on what schedules we're on.
Yeah.
Pat, do you want to say anything, I don't know.
No, I, I agree, it looks like it's going along well. The, we did have a discussion, it's near and dear to my heart, there isn't a plan to plant trees down there, and that turns out to be a park service issue.
Right, rather than, rather than a, a stream restor, a typical stream restoration project.
A typical, a good one would have trees in there.
A lot of trees, but the park, the, the history of that stream is that, according to the park, that there were not trees there. So we're taking out all the trees, burying them as, as carbon sinks and things like, I mean, it was, it's very interesting what they're doing and how they're doing it, but they're restoring it to the 1860s look, and there weren't any trees there apparently, so.
It never makes sense to me when we cut down trees.
What's that, Wes?
It never really makes sense to me when we're cutting down trees, I understand that you shed implications.
Right.
Probably better than most, but when we don't plant trees to replace them, and I've never seen evidence that we have, as a federal government anyway, done that.
Yeah, they think there weren't any trees anywhere around here, but I, I don't want to get into that.
Yeah.
It does, but overall, I mean, the National Park, N P S has been great, they're a great partner, they come out and they're very positive, they set up camera out there, a time lapse photography, I mean, they've, they've been a joy to work with. And I think from an archaeological perspective, at least the last I heard, there's nothing of significance that they found there, thank goodness. And.
No bodies.
No bodies, that's, that's the thing.
Don't even joke about that.
Yeah, I know, we don't even talk about that, but, no, everything is, is really progressing nicely and on schedule for, from the last I heard.
I should clarify, I didn't intend to be critical of the park service, I agree there, but, it's just that, you know, the Watershed Alliance has given away 13,000 trees in September, and we're promoting trees, and there's not going to be trees here. And I, believe it or not, I get questioned on these things, and so it's just a point of clarification, and offsetting that is there will be no cows back in that area and a lot of other things that would have been detrimental to the, to the water quality.
That's right, so, and I was out there over the weekend, I, I walked the whole site, and they're, they're progressing up to, is that East Confederate Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
By the, by the school, by the middle school, and they're just.
I, I know the, the bank restoration, I think they're up to the spring house.
Yes, they're up to the old spring house, yes, yes, so.
Can I raise another point about communication on that project? The Watershed Alliance puts out a monthly e-news, and I would like to run an article just outlining what, what's happening there.
Yeah, and I think you work with, through Zach, because.
Yeah, he already said he wants to say it.
Yeah, yeah, if, and then he can shepherd that through his, I guess his P R people.
But we don't care.
The what's that?
The authority doesn't care if we do that.
No, I think, I, I mean, we have enough confidence in the war to shed alliance that, that.
Okay, good.
You know, that, I don't, I don't think we have to review it, I mean, you're there and, and you see what's going on, and like I said before, the N P S has been just great, and so no one's going to step on anybody's toes here, we're all in this together, so I think plow ahead.
Okay. Well, I think the more people understand, the better off.
Yep, and the more we can get the word out and educate people, I think the better. Okay, South Street, Robbie, you're going to have to step on, up on this one, because I can't speak to it.
Well, South Street's completed, and Clearview has done all of their punch list items, everything is completed, and their work is completed, that's why you see this motion here.
Okay, and the motion is to approve the application for payment number two and final in the amount of $28,778.75 to Clearview Excavation, Inc., in connection with the South Street Storm Sewer Improvements Project. That's our, our portion, another part of our portion of this. Any comments? The motion is made, would someone like to second it?
So, I can.
Thanks, John, second. Any discussion, not, not hearing anything, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, not hearing any, it passes, thank you, it's accepted. Rob, SCAP pipe repair.
Okay, so if you recall, I think it was in 2000, maybe 16 or 17, we did one repair to a, a large storm drain pipe that had, the metal pipe that had collapsed in SCAP's parking lot.
Right.
And in 2018, we came back and had another restoration that needed to be done, we needed to put another piece of pipe in, because another section had failed.
Now, this is, excuse me, let me interrupt, that, this is a big pipe, I don't know how big it is, but it goes under the railroad tracks.
It's a three-foot pipe.
It's a three-foot?
It's a three-foot storm drain pipe that runs all the way from York Street. I don't know, it's not three-foot everywhere.
Right.
But like from the firehouse down underneath the railroad tracks, it's a three-foot pipe.
Okay.
And it's a metal corrugated pipe.
Which means it's rusting.
Yes, and it goes underneath the building of SCAP.
Underneath the building.
Yes.
I remember this one.
Yes, so we had two repairs, SCAP wanted to restore their blacktop, so they dug it out, they got, and started restoring their blacktop, and when one of the tri-axles of blacktop that backed over the, the stone base, the rear axle sunk.
Right.
Yeah, so they had to stop, we, we opened up the hole, investigated the pipe, and found that, that the three-foot pipe had, had collapsed on top. So they, they had to quit their operations for a day and a half, and we went in and made another Band-Aid to the pipe. And this time, this Band-Aid is all the way up to the concrete ramp entrance that goes into the building. So pretty much from the, from the building down to the Tiber wall, is restored with black A D S, A D S pipe, plastic A D S pipe.
Okay.
So if we have any future collapses, it might be underneath the building, or on the other side of the building where it comes out.
Okay, well, we know that this is.
It has been repaired and buttoned up, and we, we actually concreted over the joints of the A D S pipe to the old metal storm drain pipe to try to bridge that, so we don't have any more collapse.
Because eventually, I would think, Chad's not here, so I'm going to play engineer, we would want to reroute that pipe from going underneath the building.
Correct, yes, since 2000, I believe when we found the, the second, we did the second repair, Chad put it on the radar and, and started, we want to start a project to abandon that pipe and run down Hazel Alley.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And, and this is like a, a segue to why it's so important that we need to get this NIFWIF money for, for the Stevens Run Project.
So we have money for this.
Yeah, for the Culp's, I'm sorry, the Culp's Run Project, so we have money to do these sorts of repairs in the borough. So let's keep our fingers crossed, I know we, that's not one of our items here, but it's something that's, hopefully we'll hear about in August.
Just so you know, there, this repair, there really wasn't any, any, any bills for the Stormwater Authority, because SCAP agreed to have their contractor dig it open, we supplied the pipe, which we had in stock, and the van that we had in stock, and they dug it open, we were there with them, inspecting, and they dug it open and made the repairs and built it back in so they could get done with our blacktop.
That's terrific.
Paying, so.
That's great cooperation.
Big thank you to SCAP.
Yes, big thank you to SCAP. Thank you, SCAP.
Yeah, I'll relay that to the president.
Yes, please.
Yes, I will.
Yes, say we are very appreciative, I mean, we used our material, we had everything on hand, but we didn't have to use our guys or our equipment, which is a great savings, thank you. Stevens Run, I can comment on this, we removed sediment from Stevens Run, and that's yay!
As, as a maintenance project.
That, that is a maintenance project.
Right.
And it was, it was done by the borough, they did a great job, the college was very cooperative, and I think.
And we actually, we actually used agility equipment for that as well, the big excavator that Cumberland Township has.
Oh, okay, that's right, that was their piece of equipment.
Yes.
Thank you, Cumberland Township, and I know we helped them out too, so, looks great, and I know from Chad's telling me with the municipal authority, there's going to be all sorts of work going through there again.
Yes.
Because of a, a big sewer project that's going to be happening from that.
Yeah, the GMA's interceptor project is coming up through that, that open area.
And it's probably a couple of years away, or one year away?
Probably.
Yeah, so.
Where exactly will that be?
The interceptor will be running, following Stevens Run and crossing Washington Street, all the way underneath Constitution Avenue and underneath the railroad tracks, all the way over to Middle Street.
How much sediment did we remove? We ought to track that, right?
Well, I'm not sure, Deborah, Rob will tell Deborah, I don't know how that's calculated.
We, we removed roughly.
Calculate by truckload.
Roughly about 40 ton.
Yeah, and that's.
You can calculate it into cubic yards probably, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should record that, because.
Like seven, I think our, our trucks haul seven, seven and a half or eight cubic yards of material.
Okay, well, if you would be so kind to send Deborah an email or something and just give her all of the numbers, and we may need that as we go forward, especially when we renew our license.
Do you need the tonnage of, of the R5s that were put back in? Um, thanks for the.
Why don't you give Deborah everything?
Excuse me, what's R5?
Rock.
Great big orders.
Right.
I don't think so, because that's, that wouldn't consume, be considered sediment, we're looking at removing sediment.
We're looking at what came out, but it wouldn't hurt to have all the information, Deborah?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Because you never know what you're going, when you're going to need it.
Okay, so that's what you did to stabilize the bank then?
Yes.
So we don't continue to have. Where the erosion was happening on the banks, yeah, we, we lined it with R5.
Yeah, we should. Okay, thank you, thank you.
So what, you referenced this Stevens Run Project earlier in the meeting, I've lost track, what is the long-term project as it relates to Stormwater Authority?
Well.
I'm just thinking.
Stevens, this is an easy, this is an easy fix for sediment, the, the issue with Stevens Run are, Tiber is the gullible, but Stevens Run are the walls.
Right, right, this has come up with planning commission several times, because there's a proposed development right there.
Right.
Where one of the walls is.
Is in good, not in good condition.
Yeah, I mean, overall, I think it was 68% are either in poor or failing.
Right.
We had a present, presentation, I said, the last meeting, right?
And I think I was not there at the.
Yeah, the basic, basic portion is that, I think around 16 or 18% are failing, and then about another 50% are in such bad condition that we have to move quickly with, within a few years with a stonemason, the failing ones are not salvageable.
Right.
But I think there was some still discussion about who's financially responsible for the repairs, right?
Right, we're trying.
It's on my own landowner.
Right, so, but what we're trying to do is, number one, we have to come to a final, it's, we were given a proposed, I would say an overview, it's not final, but it's pretty close, okay? So they have to attach numbers to it, and then the other issue, as Pat said, is who owns some of these walls?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's a mishmash of ownership over time, and it's going to take, Adam's not here, but it's going to take some legal work to figure out where, where we are.
Then this, this, this was just a quick maintenance project, and it was like a day, day and a half maintenance project.
This, if they were all like this, it would be a breeze.
Right.
But it's not, and a lot of it has to do with, with failing walls.
That's why I recall that report. Yeah, what's already failed, what's imminent to fail.
Right.
And, you know, it's all pretty well segmented.
Right. And there are various methodologies to address each section. It's not, you know, one size, one thing will do everything.
Depends on what the wall looks like.
Right. Right. And it depends on what the particular problem is with that wall and what's located close to the top of that wall. So, yeah, that's still to be continued. And again, ad nauseam, I say that's why we need a NIFWIF grant to help us deal with some of this. Because, and I'll say this, it's public, but I'll say that this is a big bite. This is going to be at least a couple of million dollars. And I think we will be investigating whether we need to borrow money to do this. How quickly do we need to do this? Not that I'm advocating that, but that's one of the things to look at, to say, as an authority, we can borrow. And again, that's one of the tools that we have going forward. But it depends how fast we need to do some of this work. Okay. Enough said. Any new business? Anything else? Not hearing anything? Okay. No public here, so no public comment for this evening. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
So moved.
Okay. Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. It's over.
I'm not really sure specifically what you're referring to in this this particular bullet point. But we have communicated to the residents via a welcome letter, which was also not contractual. And we've followed that up with an additional letter to the residents per the list of residents provided by the borough. And come to our attention at some point when we received several hundred of them return address and several hundred missing addresses that the list was incomplete, and we asked the borough to provide an additional list or additional residents. They received that list from Waste Connections, and that is all we had to go on. So I, you know, do apologize. It's not something we intended to do, but we can only work with the information that we're given. And that was incomplete. And in an effort to, you know, provide more information to the residents, we did a second mailing. And again, received several hundred of those back as non-deliberable. So with that being said, it kind of leads us into customer service. And this bullet point says, customer service does not know the details of the Gettysburg Borough contract, has given rate payers misinformation, contradictory information on type of receptacles, and the process on acquiring those. I, I, I do believe that we have had some customer service failures, and we have attempted to rectify them. A lot of the residents that were calling into our customer service line did not have accounts set up due to the list of residents that had many, many addresses missing. So customer service didn't know exactly what to do with those because they weren't in our system. So there was some conflicting information there. We worked to get, we purchased a list of addresses from a, from a third party in an effort to marry up the, the list. We did send that back out to the borough and asked them to confirm that those additional residents were accurate. That led to some of the beginning issues with customer service. The persistent missed pickups, both residential and street cans. You know, again, we acknowledge there's been some missed pickups. Some of it in the very beginning due to residents not having their accounts set up per the, you know, the list that we were given. So, you know, that's in terms of residential, the street cans. You know, I, I don't really know how, you know, what information you guys have specifically to, to cite us as a breach of contract for those. But I do know that a lot of times we have drivers coming in from other sites to fill in, you know, some issues that we're having on staffing due to COVID, et cetera. So some, some drivers are not familiar with routes and all the street cans, but we definitely are trying to work on coaching them when they get to the site. The failure to collect refuse within the parameters of the municipality's noise ordinance. We do acknowledge that. As of recently, I don't know what dates in particular you're referring to, but I do know the latest one, you know, speaking to Pat, the heat index had, was supposed to be up in the high 90s that day. And he asked the crews to start early to make sure they got their routes done before, you know, the, the heat of the day. That is something that we should have come to the borough and asked permission, or at least notified. And we do.
When, when did that occur?
I don't know the exact date, but it was about two weeks ago. It was right before the breach of letter.
So not, not since the letter?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Are you aware of?
No, I'm not aware of any incidents, you know, since the letter.
Are, are you aware of some?
Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna let you say your piece.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
And then I'll, I'll have a few notes for you.
Sure, sure. That's, um. Incorrect invoices sent to customers type of service that they wanted. Example, being billed for full service when they wanted the per bag. Again, this goes back to the issue of the list that we were given. We set, per the list that was provided to the borough from Waste Connections, we set the customers up on the same service. Appearing so, as much as we could make out of the list, there was a lot of coding that Waste Connections uses that we weren't 100% sure of. But we, we set them up in what we believed to be the exact same service they had with Waste Connections. If some of those customers wanted to switch and go from full service to bag or bag to full service, you know, when they called into our customer service line, that, that could have initially been an issue. But again, stemming from a lack of, of a good scrubbed list. Then the last failure to provide Big Belly trash compactors in a timely and satisfactory manner. Again, we ordered those, once we got the signed contract from the borough. The supply chain issues are causing a major delay in the manufacturing and delivery of those. We are expecting them anytime, but in the meantime, we have provided used Big Bellies, one trash, one recycling at two different locations specified in the contract. They may not be new, and it, it, the exact specifications called for in the contracts, but we did find used ones put in their place before the, 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 the new ones came in. And as far as the, the bullet point items, I mean, that's really all I have to, to, to say in regards to those. But I would love to hear your, your side.
The Big Belly units, you just stated you ordered those when the contract was executed. So January 3rd is the date the contract was executed.
Well, the date we got receipt of the contract, yes.
Okay, you signed it on January 3rd.
Okay.
Okay.
Then that, that's when they were ordered. I, I didn't personally order them, but I did execute the contract.
The reason I bring it up is we had been dealing with Mr. Harity.
Harity, yes.
Quite significantly. And he had advised us in an email in June, June 13th, that they were not ordered until early March. Which would make sense why we didn't have them and why they weren't installed until July, three months after the contract took effect.
So the email stating he ordered them March 3rd?
Email from June 13th. Let's see, we had a bit of a back and forth here. Ah, yeah, June 13th, pardon me, June 13th. Yeah, that's the right date. 9:17 a.m. Was off a few days last week. Sorry for the delayed response. Still waiting on delivery. This is regarded the Big Bellies. We did order in early March. This was after they'd offered to put toters on the square, which is completely unacceptable in a tourist area.
Do you have a copy of the executed contract with those, that January 3rd date?
Sure do. Yeah, it's actually, it's notarized by Romelia Tyag.
On what date?
January 3rd, 2022. Michelle Deveron authorized signature representative attestant Anna Garby, or Garba. Says the undersigned, having fully read and considered the terms, conditions, the municipal waste collection disposal and recycling contract, and the documents contained in general specifications, et cetera, et cetera. Is understood.
Correct. Is that not the contract that was provided within the solicitation? Is that not the solicit, the, when was it executed by the borough? Because I, I signed it and had it notarized in my submittal, which seems more in line with that date. But that was signed prior to the bid tabulations and execution of the contract.
Well, the section I focus on is item D, which says, in submitting the response, the undersigned agrees to comply with Adams County Municipal Solid Waste Management Plan, ordinances and rules and regulations Adams County, and the requirements of the contracted documents.
Right, but at that point, we hadn't even been made aware that we were awarded the contract. So that contract wouldn't, I mean, I, I, I understand.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking you is when did you order the Big Bellies?
It was my understanding that it was, they were ordered immediately after the contract was executed. So when did the borough execute the contract is my question.
Do you know that date? I just thought that'd be, I mean, kind of a simple question to answer.
Well, it's actually not. I mean, we wouldn't have ordered.
You don't get invoiced for purchasing material like that?
The signature page reads, in witness whereof, the parties have executed this agreement as of the day and year set forth above, which will be at the beginning of the contract. So. I'd have to, I don't know exactly where that would be listed. Probably under the term on the contract. Regardless, council formally awarded it on February 14th in a public meeting.
So my confusion is, yeah, I mean, that's been a major issue of contention, right? And there seems to be some confusion about when you ordered them or did not order them.
So if the contract was awarded formally in session on February 14th, then it was probably signed sometime after that, right? Shortly after?
Okay.
And we were.
I probably signed it on February 14th.
Okay. So then that's the executed contract, regardless of when I had it notarized on January 3rd.
Okay.
So.
So that's not early March?
Well, March 3rd, from February 14th. I don't know when we were in receipt of that contract. So we're talking two weeks tops before we ordered them? I mean, I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm failing to see.
Well, when it was awarded, you were responsible for initiating that service within six weeks. So two weeks in that context is a significant period of time.
Could be, we were definitely looking around to see if there were any other units that we could get delivered in a, in a more timely fashion.
I mean, we, there, there are things here at the borough that we would like to do, services we would like to provide to people. And we have foregone, I think of one right now with the police department, we have foregone betting on things because we are unable to provide those services.
Mr. Heiser.
Understood, understood.
Mr. Heiser, I think it's not that our inability of getting this, providing the services that, you know, that require for the residents of Gettysburg. I think what Michelle was saying that with the supply chain, you had mentioned about communication. Maybe that's the opportunity to R and where there was a lack of communication, not with Michelle or anybody on our end, but maybe at the site level. These things, these Big Bellies get ordered at the site level. So that was an opportunity there where Michelle and I can follow up with the site level and find out what took place here and why they didn't want to happen. Why you didn't receive your Big Bellies in a certain amount of time.
Yeah, I mean, the, the high tourist season here is significant. And we've really had a lot of problems with refuse because of the lack of those units. We were advised by email on June 28th by Mr. Harity that they would be here within six weeks. That timeframe is closing very quickly. And I think that's some of the frustration that I deal with is that we're told things, and then they don't occur. And in the response letter, that was one of my frustrations. So this pandemic began in March of 2020. This contract wasn't even placed out until December of '21.
Correct. And, and, and I, I acknowledge that, and I, I would have expected that, that response. And the only thing I can say to that, and I'm sure Jeff can speak to it as well, is, you know, regardless of, of, of when COVID started and where we're at today and when the solicitation was issued, we have a continual issue with drivers getting COVID and quarantining and pulling drivers from other sites. And it's not, you know, it's not ideal to have those, you know, kind of service interruptions or, you know, having to bring those drivers up to speed. But, you know, we are here every day and, and, and doing our best to provide the service. But again, still due to COVID, there are sometimes a lack of drivers through, through the waves of, of COVID.
I mean, you understand, we represent the community, the people of this borough. And they're still paying full bill, pickup or no. And I took issue with that in your response letter also. We will continue to complete those missed pickups within 24 hours. That has not occurred.
Well, I pulled all of our tickets from, from our customer service. And given, I know that that is not entirely representative of all misses. So I, I do acknowledge that. But in the month of June and in the month of July, one person called in to report a miss in the month of June, and one person called in to report a miss in, in the month of July.
Do you know who those people are? Because I called in to report a miss. And I was told that they would be there within 48 hours to pick up my recycling. And I wish they hadn't told me that. If they had said we just can't get there, I would have been irritated. But I would not have been nearly as irritated. Taking 30 minutes out of my day. I'm doing a pretty substantial project right now. Okay, and it's, it's literally money lost. Okay, out of my day. I don't have hours in my day to give. Given 30 minutes each time out of my day to call. First, they'll be told they'll be here within 48 hours. I'll tell you what, hour 49, I was calling. And I was told, well, we might get to it. They didn't pick it up till the following week. Okay, so I have recycling blowing into the street. And this is, this is, I, I hesitate to bring up myself, but this is one person, and there are many of our residents that have received this. I had residents that, we finally got it resolved, but it took four or five weeks to get resolved. I had a woman that had recycling, and they wouldn't pick it up. She watched them drive by. She wasn't able to get out to the street because of her mobility issues. And she was accumulating recycling within an efficiency apartment. So our Public Works crew went and got the recycling. Those are hours this community does not have to give up. All right, we were down three people because of COVID. We have brought them back. We have hired. We don't have hours to give up out of our own personnel pool to do this work. You know, we pay people to do this work. Like many other services that we have here. You know, we have an engineer, we have a solicitor, we have many different services. And we pay those people to do that work. We can't pull a very limited staff pull off to do these things. It just cannot occur. So to be told that it would be there within, you know, 48 hours and to not, it is a lot more upsetting, right? But really, the big issue is the things that are in the contract that I would say are very clear, that just aren't occurring. And then the, the follow-up, I don't know how many times I've been lied to. I don't know how many. I have an email here from Mr. Harity on the 5th of July, when he advised, we were dealing with the Big Belly issue. And he advised that they had been, the Big Bellies, we've been told they were going to be in, and they weren't. This is before the 4th of July. But due to three COVID cases, the workforce was unable to make that happen as hard as we tried. Okay. We have dumped the street cans every single day, including Saturday. They, meaning the Big Bellies, be installed this week. That was not true. Okay, unbeknownst to Mr. Harity, beginning the end of June, I spent time I candidly don't have going to eight different street cans for more than two weeks. Can you pull up exhibit four? All right, so if you go down to the 3rd of July, the 4th of July was a Sunday. So I can't really speak to, I didn't knock you for the 4th of July. But if you look there on the second, that left-hand picture, it's a very distinct floral cup. And you look at the 3rd, now that's a Saturday. And by contract, it's supposed to be picked up every day except for Sunday. All right, so that's Saturday before 7:00 a.m. It's there. Sunday, so that pickup didn't happen on Saturday. At least not during contractual hours. All right, so scrolling down. So I didn't highlight Monday, right, because Sunday's not a pickup day. But look, it didn't happen on Tuesday. Scroll on down. Or pardon me, didn't happen Monday, so it's still there Tuesday. Yep, going down, it's still there Wednesday. It's still there Thursday. Okay. And there are eight different exhibits. And of those exhibits, which you received last Wednesday by email that I was CC'd on, maybe you didn't get it. It just keeps going. There are many of these cans that were not picked up on many, many days. Some of them, you know, and people get the big visual. The big visual, one I checked routinely was right in front of the Regimental Corps Master on Stier Avenue. So more than 20% of the time, I forget how many collections exactly, I had accrued here. And again, this is only based upon, there were during the time period, 124 required collection opportunities. So not counting Sunday. All right, there were 124 times that refuse should have been collected. Of those opportunities, I can tell you with certainty, 25 of those were not completed. And I can tell you that because I can see the same exact refuse in the can. That doesn't count the times I can't see the same refuse in the can because they're that busy. A lot of people get really animated because they see things like in front of Stier Avenue, where you see a can on one day, it's, it's starting to get full. And then it gets more full, then it overflows. Though in all fairness to Waste Management, right, there were opportunities there where it just wasn't required. So the 4th of July, being that Sunday, I believe, right, the trash was emptied at the 3rd of July that morning. Okay, there's very little bit of refuse in there. The 4th is not a required collection day, so there's more, right? And by the morning, the 5th, it was overflowing. That's not a failure. And I didn't gig you on that because it's not a failure. It's perhaps something we should look at in terms of our Big Belly deployment, should we have more? Okay. But the, the items that I noted specifically were cases where I could point to and say, wow, there's the exact same trash. So I'm giving you the, by far, the benefit of the doubt. If there are scenarios where it got covered by more trash, and believe me, that happened, I'm sure. You know, those were not included in that count. So I'm sorry, but anything where you're failing more than 20% of the time on a random sample is not good. And, and these are, again, the face of the community. We sell a tourism product. All right, if we as a government fail to hold you accountable to this contract, what we're really doing is shortchanging our residents. And all of our business owners, they rely on this looking appropriate to keep people walking the streets and enjoying their businesses. That's why we do this. It would be very easy for us to have no street cans at all. It would be very foolish. Okay. The, uh, 7:00 a.m. issue, can you pull up the photograph I sent you here just a bit ago? So we were told that they, you know, no more before 7, that's this morning. Before 7:00 a.m.
That's today.
That's today. Yep. I'll give you, it was close to 7:00, but it took me a while to find them. They gotten clever, okay? They don't go the same place that I found them on the 25th of July. When I just, I mean, it didn't take me more than two minutes. Put the windows down, you can hear a truck. You know, there's some rigs come through, of course, on the streets, but it's pretty distinctive stop and start. That morning, I found it behind Kenny's, like, there they are. Probably thought I was crazy, standing there taking pictures of them. And this morning, I, I tell you what, I went through most of the western, pardon me, the southern part of town. Because it's the south part of town is on, on Mondays. And I did make it through most of the southern part of town. I thought, you know what? Maybe things have been resolved. Maybe they're not out here doing collections because they're, but sure enough, I made the turn on the Stier Avenue, and there they were. So it took me a few minutes to catch up with them. So this is like, in all fairness, it's like 6:55, 6:56. I know it's close to 7:00, but they've been doing it for five or 10 minutes before that. I don't know when they started. I don't know where they started. But they were at it. And to be very candid with you, the reason I'm taking these photographs is to make sure the community gets what it's supposed to do, to receive. But I'm also not allowed to start working before 7:00 a.m. I can't run power equipment before 7:00 a.m. because it's a noise ordinance violation. I have neighbors who deserve the peace and quiet. And I'm kind of sad some days that I crank it up right after 7:00 because it's, you know, probably still a little disturbing, but the ordinance is the ordinance. So. Other members of council wish to address Waste Management? And then Mr. Moon, I knew you would.
Yeah, I do. I just want to respond to some of the points you made there about our letter. I, I think you did know that you needed to, you supply receptacles, and you know that because Waste Connections gave you guys a list of 1,141 houses that had Waste Connections receptacles. And Mr. Harity then took that list and cooked it down to 170 houses that he decided to provide receptacles for. So that was never in debate whether receptacles would be provided. The question was, to whom would he be providing them? And what he ended up ordering was only the houses that specifically had 96-gallon toters. Every other house, he excluded from the list. And I know this because I spent several days on the phone with Pat and with another fellow, I don't remember his name, and you, trying to make sure that we had the correct number of receptacles being brought to the borough. So I think you guys did know that receptacles were expected.
We knew.
I'm gonna keep going.
Oh, okay.
There, you made points about the communication. And in the contract, it does specify that you are responsible for communicating with the constituents, with our constituents, with your customers. I was in contact with all three of you after the initial mailing went out to let you know that nobody on my street received it. There was a second mailing. We still haven't received that either. When we call the service number that's on those mailings, we are put in contact with people at a corporate office somewhere who do not know the particulars of our contract. We've had people in this community who have been yelled at for insisting that glass is supposed to be recyclable here, and we're told, no, it's not, even though it is in the contract. That has happened many times.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Carr, weren't you told that recycling wasn't part of your contract?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like, it's a small community.
No, I agree, there's been some failure.
Five to 7,000 people here, depending how you count.
I was told by Waste Management, recycling is not part of the Gettysburg Borough contract.
So you got like a person here for about every thousand people or so. And, yeah, we experienced.
But I really want to respond to something you just said here, that in June or July, you only had one ticket about missed service. On, what's the date here? Sorry. July 11th, the entire west end of town was missed. You received an email from Mr. Berger about it. I then responded saying, you've missed the entire neighborhood. I specifically listed constituents who contacted us about their trash not being picked up. We were told it would be picked up the next day. Half of the houses were, still many were missed. And my house was missed for several days thereafter. It took almost a week to get that trash collected.
I did preface that statement with who called into the customer service center. And I did say that I know it's not all-inclusive of the misses.
Not only is it not all-inclusive, but it's a deceptive way of portraying the information.
No, I, I, there are emails, there's multiple ways of communicating misses. And I, I took that into consideration with my statement.
All right, I, I just want to conclude here, and I'll let other folks speak if they would like to. There are many of us here, elected officials, as well as staff members, who have given you a really absurd number of our hours to try to resolve this. And we've been doing it since March. And we are still not seeing the contract met. And I don't think that's acceptable.
I'll state that while those pictures that you showed, Mr. Heiser, do definitely show an issue, that is not the worst of the, of the, of the receptacles around town as far as what has happened. Previous, before these very temp, I hope, are very temporary, small bellies. They're not big. In May, our beautiful Lincoln Square was overflowing numerous times. Day after day after day after day of these receptacles. Not just partially full, overflowing. And for a company that's supposed to be picking up, I thought it was three days a week. Are you telling me it's supposed to be every day?
By contract, it says every day, except for Sunday.
It sat there for a good five days straight overflowed on Lincoln Square in May.
And the ones that I chose to highlight here are the ones that are easiest to see. Um, if you want to pull up, uh, Exhibit Seven, you can go down to July the Fifth. Okay, and then you go into July the Sixth. So there's like the same McDonald's bag is there. Uh, the exact same one and the same other stuff with it, and it's like, again, it's all, and then there are times where it gets, it gets taken. But to Mr. Carr's point, like, I didn't pull up and highlight overflowing cans because I can't tell you for sure that you didn't fulfill your responsibilities.
I think, excuse me, just one second. I think for us, that's an educational piece with our workforce there. As, you know, the truck ride comes up, the helper gets off the step, he looks inside the can and sees only a bag in a can there. You know, our message to them would be, hey, listen, take it. Dump the can, as you mentioned earlier, this is what the borough pays for. Dump the can, no matter if it's got two bags in it or it has five bags in it, we should be dumping the can. And I think that's where it comes in, that communication lives between Michelle and myself, getting back to the workforce and letting them know, we have to take it all, all the time, not sometimes, but all the time.
I mean, I hate to put a security camera on a can, but I guess we could do that. Right? If that's the question, because I'm sure there are cans that were more than a bag or two
understood.
that were, that were left. Yeah, I just, I kinda hesitate to throw the punch if, if I'm not sure that it's gonna land. Okay?
But it was more than, it's back to Lincoln Square. I, I mean,
Oh, it's egregious, yeah.
It should definitely be taken regardless of how full or not full the can is. But if it is overflowing for five days straight, and that was one week in May, it happened more than once in May, more than one week in May. And I, I am the first person to, to, to say, I get the, 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 you know, we're, we're still in the pandemic, people think we're out of it, we're not. The workforce is hurting. I get it. But five days straight and Waste Management doesn't have somebody to get on a truck from some other region and get over here and clean Lincoln Square, that's unacceptable.
It is unacceptable. It is, and I, I acknowledge that, and honestly, you know, some of these stories are the first I'm hearing of them in their entirety.
Okay, I'm gonna say, I said that in writing, yeah.
In their entirety. I haven't heard some of these stories, but I, I, I'm.
I guess where my concern is, if I were to go and do this same type of experiment, which again, I, I really don't have time to do. But, you know, if I get up, drop my kids off, go do this, between the time their daycare opens, when I can start working, I don't feel any better today about the likelihood that I'm gonna find cans empty. I read your letters, I hear what you're saying, all the reasons and so forth, but I just don't have the confidence. And a lot of that stems from the promises that have been made over time and continually broken.
Mr. Heiser, and respectfully, I understand where you're coming from. I'm gonna say this to you, me being the Director of Collections, you know, I can tell you right now, I came all the way from New Jersey, two and a half hours, two hours and forty-five minutes, Michelle and I was talking about it today, to get in front of the Board here and the council members here, you know, and talk about our situation. We talked about our labor constraints that we're going through right now. You know, we have got into a better position when it comes to our labor. We're still working on our labor, we're still, uh, hiring extra staff members to help out when these cases do arise. You know, I can't sit here and say that, hey, listen, uh, we won't get drivers come to contact, uh, contract COVID, let's get sick. But we are in a position to do better, you know, so I understand where you're coming from, and I, again, me being the Director of Collection, I can tell you that these things are going to change. This is my first time hearing them, and I just ask, give me an opportunity to correct these issues, you know, with the team there. You know, we talk about, you've seen the cans, the trucks coming in early, you know, Friday, I think we got on the call, Michelle, I, and Rob got on the call, we talked about those things. And I said, hey, listen, let me come up here and let me, uh, support Michelle first and foremost, uh, in this situation, and try to put a game plan in place to correct these issues. Our goal is to service the residents of Gettysburg, you know, correctly and efficiently.
I told Patrick several times, it is the easiest outcome for me and for the community here if, if Waste Management fulfills its obligations. Um, I think we received an email perhaps today, you know, about, we kinda have this expectation now coming from, from Mr. Hegarty and perhaps others that we would basically be contacting him every day, we're fulfilling it every day with what's going on or what's going wrong, and that he would meet with our staff every two weeks. Um, we can't give up those hours. You know, when things come to our attention, sure, we'll let you know, but you're the refuse holder. I, I can't do that. You know, i- it's kinda like many other things that I do in my life. If I observe something, we have code enforcement, okay? If we go to a, I'm a volunteer firefighter, we go somewhere and something looks incorrect. Can't be certain that it's incorrect, but something looks incorrect, I'll probably drop an email to Clem Lott, or now Peter Griffion, who's on our, uh, uh, staff. You know, hey, I think you need to go look at this address, this doesn't look right. But that's about usually where it stops. And that's a life, those are like life safety questions, right? Because I don't have the hours in my day. Um, I can appreciate your difficulties, but I can also appreciate that, you know, I had a five-thirty meeting this evening here, and I was working till four forty-five. I worked a long day today, and I do most days, and I get pretty dirty. But I did what I had to do to prep and be here. And that's the deal, that's kinda the expectation of everyone. Um, I appreciate that you traveled to be here, but candidly, a lot of people do a lot of things to make this work.
Understood.
You know?
Understood.
Um, so, yeah, if you folks can wrap this up i- in a way that it is restored to what it should be, that is the best possible outcome. If you're unable to do so, we're gonna move on. Okay? That's the deal. So I wish you the best in doing that. Um, you know, it is the easiest outcome. I don't really want to go through the process of re-bidding contracts and so forth. There'll be incredible delay, there'll be more confusion. Um, but there has to be corrective action, and it has to actually occur. The concept of, you know, it may happen, i- it has to happen. There's just no other way.
Do you have a timeframe for that?
Well, the contract's actually pretty, um,
Well, for the corrective action. The contract says one thing.
The contract tells us that basically the borough at this point can pretty much do as it will. Um, I think my issue here with trying to give you an exact timeframe is that, you know, we've been pretty vocal about this since April first. It's August. And, you know, we kinda got to a point, we got everything lined up to send you the letter. Um, I guess I could kick that to the council, but I don't know, there is, Ms. Butterfield has a lot of experience with refuse.
Just have one thing to say. Um, both you and Mr. Viola cited that there've been many fewer complaints recently about pickup. I think the explanation for that may be that, uh, as Sarah can attest, people will tell her they've tried four times to call customer service, placed on hold, disconnected, and, um, in frustration, they turn to complaining to Sarah or to one of us. Um, so that type of customer service response is as harmful to this situation as is pickup issues.
Agreed.
Um, people are frustrated, and they turn their frustration toward us, thinking that we are, um, the ones who are muddling the water.
And that we're some able, somehow able to resolve it, and in many times, we are not able to. We get a similar outcome. It, it's kinda like dealing with some other government agencies where people think that we have some sort of magical inroads, and we don't. We just don't. Any other input from council? Anything else?
Have there been, I had a question regarding, have there been complaints about billing at all, um, from residents?
I can tell you that I was billed for large item pickup, and it was resolved. But that's included. I, I still don't understand why it happened. Um, I was a little frustrated, there was no way, and it's not required, but there was no way for me to address that inside the billing system online. There was no way to, you know, kinda hide, highlight that or tag that and be like, hey, this shouldn't have happened. Um, so it took a while, and then I actually got invoiced, and I, you know, now with the, and I don't know if Mr., Mr. Hegarty told us to give his cell phone number out to all the residents. I don't know if he totally understood what he said there or what he wrote, um, because then he asked me about, I didn't, you know, tell him that I was on the Borough Council. And I called him and said, hey, you know, this didn't, this happened, I don't know why. And he got, he figured it out pretty quickly. Um, and got it resolved, but at the same time, um, you know, he was proposing, oh, can we have a specific customer service number for the borough? And I said, I hate to tell you, your cell phone number is that number. Um, that's, when you told, he told us about a week or two before to send it out to everybody, I said, I hate to tell you what I've been doing. Because I've been sending it out to everybody. So that may also not cause complaints to reach customer service because they're going directly to your, uh, your supervisor.
Understood.
Yeah, actually, I do want to add one last thing, too. Um, we, we've had conflicting messaging from you as well throughout this process, and, and the, the conflict between the borough and Waste Management started before the contract even took effect. We were having problems the week before April first. We were on the phone, we were in emails. Uh, really, um, inappropriate tones of voice were used against the borough manager by Mr. Harity. Um, we've also had people in the community tell us that he's been, I'll say gruff on the phone, um, speaking to people in a manner that is just not acceptable. Um, it's not acceptable for your customers, but it's also not acceptable for our staff. Um, at different points, I've had him tell me, don't bother talking to Michelle, only talk to me, and I've had you tell me, don't talk to Pat, talk to me.
So I said contractually, I am your point of contact. Service related, it's Pat. But I, I am aware that those comments were made by Pat, and I would have never said, don't contact Pat, it's just, I'm your point of contact for contractual, um, obligations. I don't manage the service, um, but if, if that's the intent, I don't recall the exact words, but that was my intent of what I said.
So the contractual obligation is delivery of the service?
Yeah, and I just mean questions, comments, uh, issues with contract wise would be me um, and, and Pat for service related issues. But yes, I, I understand that the contract does include service.
Like that's part and parcel. I mean, they're more or less the same thing.
Yes, okay.
Um, so I guess my point would be, um, this has been a difficult relationship since before the jumping off point even.
I agree, the issues did start prior to April one.
And, I, I mean, we're in, we're in August now, and we're only just now starting to see some of these things click into sort of regular business practices, trash being picked up with regularity. Um, there are street cans that are being picked up now that had never been picked up. Um, stuff that we documented day after day after day for weeks and weeks and weeks. Cans that were starting to attract raccoons, that's, that's not an issue we've ever had in the borough. I mean, maybe we have ever, I don't know, but we haven't in, in recent years. Um, we have been in constant communication with you about problems, and that they have continued to persist, that they continue to occur, that we continue to receive communications from your customers, uh, that the service isn't being provided in the correct manner is really, really, really disconcerting for us.
It's, it's concerning for me as well.
Okay.
For the office.
And Jeff. I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure there will be some additional discussion after this meeting, um, regarding service. Because I think there are
Seems likely.
some things that, you know, additional items that come to light in this meeting.
And Mr. Moon, I will address that with Mr. Harity about his conduct with, uh, not only the residents, but with the council members.
I, I appreciate that, and I, and I don't, you know, bring it up to give him any grief, it's just, our staff works hard.
Understood.
But, you know, they don't need that.
Understood.
All right. Any other comments?
I think I'll just say one last thing. As far as customers, um, reaching out to you, I serve all three wards here in the borough, and several, several residents reached out to me, and they said, after the third time, I'm, I'm not calling them again because I'm not getting anywhere. And it's like they don't know anything about our specific situation. And I think, if I had to guess, it's because Waste Management is such a large corporation, but it seems like your company doesn't know the specifics of the Borough of Gettysburg contract and what they're supposed to be providing to the residents. And that gets frustrating as a customer to call in and call in and call in, and to hear from the other side of, no, that's not, no, you don't have that type of contract. So then, then the customer is just like throwing their hands up in the air. So I think you might not be getting as many complaints anymore because they've tried. And I'm the same.
I wouldn't disagree.
I, I, I'm the same. If I've, if I've tried three times and I'm getting nowhere, I'm not calling anymore. Why waste my time?
Understood. They are provided with the details of the contract. Those were provided and confirmed by many, many, um, eyes that the proper information of the contract and what was provided to the borough was provided to customer service in the format that they require it. Whether they were looking at that information when customers called in, I can't really speak to that a hundred percent, but they were provided the, the proper details.
Your staff was provided the proper detail. That's as they should. My, my point is, the residents that are calling, what they're getting from your staff is not the correct information. So just by providing the information, that's one part of your job. The other part is making sure that your staff is then in turn giving the correct information to your customers.
Correct.
So you can't just do one part.
Agreed.
Judy, what, you have the, uh, our electronic recycling event coming. Is that correct in September?
September seventeen.
Do you have concerns about, this would be the first time that Waste Management has tackled that, and they didn't show up, well, they were invited to the last one to show how we did it? Um, I guess.
We do it a little differently, our covered device event, than other local municipalities because of our traffic situation, uh, in order to keep things moving smoothly.
Have a call this conversation.
And, um, right, we did at our very first post-contract.
And they call you and schedule a time, and, yep, I'm aware.
So as that date looms, what Chris is referring to, I have voiced some concerns. We need to get on the right track before September seventeen. Uh, it's going to be in my report later. We have so far twenty-three people signed up, uh, this early. Sixteen from the website and seven from phone calls to me. So we're moving along, but we've got to be sure that you all can continue with our successful events.
I don't, I don't see an issue, but you're, you're free to call me, and we can go over the details and make sure that we're on the right track.
Just, just real general, uh, just to emphasize what everybody's saying. You know, we represent our neighbors, our constituents, and they're frustrated. Um, and they're not happy, and we hear about it. So, I mean, this is kind of why we have, we're, we're here right now, and um, just concerning it's just taken this long. Uh, even if things are kinda getting a little bit better, um, just concerning about the relationship as it moves forward, so.
We've requested in the past to be, um, on the agenda for previous council meetings.
Yeah, you asked to come in for a work session, and.
No, we said any, any session.
Yeah, well, either, either way.
Either way.
Be very, very candid with you, we keep, we keep, keep quite busy here. And it was probably more appropriate for you to reduce your items to writing as you did. Because, I mean, this has been considerably lengthy, and I guess it needs to be. But I don't, we tend to accomplish things here. Let me frame it up that way. We tend to get things done. And that's what we use that time for.
Yeah, and I, I think.
So whether it's, uh, considering fire code revisions or a human relations ordinance or any other things that we have here in the borough, um, our time is rather limited as a, a council in terms of our, our meeting capacity. So I'm aware that you asked for that, and I'm aware that I rejected that. Um, because candidly, I didn't think it was really appropriate for Because candidly, I didn't think it was really appropriate for you folks to come here and spend perhaps an hour telling us why you couldn't do it. When you could write us and tell us why you couldn't do it. The, the whole issue here is that you have to do it. Meaning fulfilling the contract. I mean, I, I'm not going to try to analyze why you're having difficulty doing it, and I can listen to your reasons. The issue is, at the end of the day, it has to happen. And this is true in so many different areas of service type work. You know, there are things that we just have to get done, one way or another. And, you know, a lot of people have had difficulties in this time. This contract was bid in a timeframe when those difficulties had been long known. Long known. Nothing new. It's a mine hauler. Anything else?
That is it for us.
Thanks for coming all this way.
Thank you. All right. So, public comment, this is restricted to items that are on the agenda. If you did not have a chance, uh, please do refer to the agenda for this evening. Please limit yourself to five minutes. And state your name and address. Any public comments? All right, if not, we'll go on to current and old business, planning, zoning and code enforcement. Ms. Marshall.
Hi. Uh, you all have my report. Additional information I'd like to remind everybody of, we have a planning commission meeting next Monday. And the agenda for that includes the redevelopment plan for seven seventy-eight Baltimore Street. And the redevelopment project for one fifty Carlisle Street. Uh, we also have an upcoming zoning hearing board meeting on August twenty-fourth at seven PM. Which is a continuation of the seven twenty-seven zoning appeal. Does anybody have any questions about my reports?
Any questions for Ms. Marshall? All right, if not, we'll go on to historic and environmental preservation. Ms. English.
I just have one update for the stormwater numbers that we did receive, three hundred and three thousand dollars roughly to date for our payments. Last month we had eight hundred and seventy-seven due, we're down to five sixty-six for twenty twenty-two. You have my report. If you don't have any questions, I do have one motion on the agenda.
Do you have any questions for Ms. English? Historic and environmental preservation. I would comment, it was, uh, raised during our, uh, Stormwater Authority meeting. If you've not, uh, visited the Culp Run area, they are working on that. I think that, uh, both, uh, Mr. Novel, um, Mr. Malawiki are keeping pretty good tabs from an authority end. And then of course, Ms. English and Mr. Harbaugh making their visits. Any questions for Ms. English? All right, if not, someone please make the, uh, the HARP motion, please.
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, HARP. Following its review on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. And grant a certificate of appropriateness for the following application as presented. C O A twenty-two dash zero zero seven six, Critical Project, twelve Chambersburg Street, Open Minds. To complete, to compete, I'm sorry, to complete the traditional facade with a new arched stone entrance door and a new arched stone window. Using a new stone masonry veneer that will create a more formal entrance way and cohesive look. That is similar to the Lincoln Square facade of Open Minds. And is consistent with both the Secretary of the Interior Guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide for Rehabilitation as presented to the Board. And the application dated July fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second. Sarah, take your pick. Someone's ready to second those motions, not always to read them. All right, any, uh, any questions or, uh, comments about that HARP motion this month?
I have a question.
Yeah.
How drastic, I drove by that, uh, entrance way, uh, for Open Minds. It's a beautiful entrance way. How much change will happen there?
I have the design plans, I can send you a copy of it. They're just kind of changing the windows over the, the two entrance areas and the door to kind of match.
But it won't be necessarily modernized, it will still have that
Correct.
character.
And I'll send you a copy of that plan. I can send it to all the council members if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes it helps to
Yeah.
To include those can help kind of
Maybe in the council folder, I usually put them in there, I'm not sure. It might have been too large because it, sometimes we get larger plans and I have to copy them down.
Overwhelming?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll get at least a copy of that section for you and send it out.
Because they've been doing, um, work there and also down on York Street, too, helping to, not helping, but, you know, kind of restoring things. All right, any other, uh, questions on the HARP motion this evening? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, Parking Department, Ms. Thistle.
Good evening, you all have my report. I have all my comparisons in as I normally do. And the only thing that I would like to mention additional is that residential parking permits are due September first. Those have, those you can purchase now and there are fifty-one purchased as of today so far.
I noticed in the, uh, the invoices, and I think they've gone up, we've renewed some of the signs, I think. Mr. Harbaugh, maybe, some of the R P P signs, signages, yeah. I noticed some up, I saw it in the bills and I'm like, and there they are.
Yeah, and we, and we need to reduce them, we keep, keep on them, there are a lot that need to be
Yeah, so get your R P P in. All right, any questions or, uh, comments for Ms. Thistle? Ms. Butterfield, yes.
You had someone comment slash complain about the twenty-minute parking meters covers, uh, limit?
Oh, yes.
Are, are you addressing that?
I have sent the email to all of you. I think I received two or three, three responses back that that is the intended use is the twenty minutes. That was what we intended it for. Had that not been a twenty-minute space, you probably wouldn't find that space available. But that was designated to help for just a quick run-in. Or people wouldn't be stopping because they can't park.
That's the perfect response. I called the President of Karma and the past president, um, to discuss, did they feel this was still a good thing? And they both very much did, that, um, they feel they are used and they are useful. So thank you for dealing with that person who was not happy.
I can also show you usage because we do track that. So if anybody would like that information, we do track that every time we empty the meter. So I know how much they are being used.
Yeah, can you send that on?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, it does provide a, for context for the public, that this person thought that that space being open at that moment meant that it could have been for them if it weren't twenty minutes. And the only reason it was open was because it's a twenty-minute space and people are in and out of it all the time. At that moment, it was open. But yeah, I thought your response was very appropriate as well. Any other questions for Ms. Thistle? Uh, Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening, um, you all should have gotten my report. Just add some highlights for the community on my report. Wolf Valley, we, we finished Wolf Valley paving it last week. You're welcome, Matt.
Looks great.
Thank you. Sheely Alley would do to, can do to, uh, the paver timing. Uh, we won't be able to do that till, till September, middle of September. Uh, those were actually the only two aisles we're paving this fall, or this year. So we'll have them completed. Stevens Run out at the College between Constitution and Washington Street. We've been doing some, uh, some routine maintenance work out there. And that is now completed, um, along with some other maintenance work for the Stormwater Authority. Uh, we will be starting this week and next week, traffic line painting, crosswalk line painting, uh, thermoplastic pavement markings on the streets. Daytime and nighttime. And maintenance work, yes. We do, we are still doing replacement sign work that needs to be done.
Yep, I noticed that, as I was going through the building consultant today, I was, ah, there, there is one of those signs, okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's all I have.
Any, uh, questions for Mr. Harbaugh this evening?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Robbie, where exactly are you gonna be starting, um, on some parking stall lines?
All over town.
Great.
The, the metered spots.
That's what I want to hear.
The R P P, the R P P parking.
Oh my gosh, there's some really
Different places all around.
faded lines and people are really parking very poorly.
Yes. Now, now keep in mind
Sorry, I was watching a truck that got stuck between two vehicles trying to get out.
Yeah.
It was ridiculous, it was ridiculous.
And you'll email me with, with your concerns and, and we'll make sure that they get addressed.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I, I just wanted to say, Robbie, uh, not only does the alley behind us on Wolf Valley look, look good, but I also want to point out that several of my neighbors had to speak to you about concerns they had for where the, the way their property intersected with the alley. A couple of them even, uh, took time to speak to, is it C E Williams? Who was the vendor there? Um, and they've all just said that you and your team, everybody was gracious, kind, compassionate, patient. So thank you for the demeanor you bring to, uh, the public.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
You're the man.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I've seen the crew doing a lot of good work in the mornings during several weeks. We kind of got into a routine where I waved to them. After the first or second day, I think some of the new, new folks figured out maybe what I was doing. Like, why is this guy running around with a phone taking pictures of trash? All right. Mr. Clayball's unable to be with us this evening. He did send some information beyond his report, uh, related, uh, to this payment. This concerns the, uh, lighting on South Street. So this is a motion to approve, uh, the application for payment number three filed in the amount of forty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and fifteen cents to Y Electric LLC. Connection with the South Street C D B G site lighting project. So Chad wanted to mention that the, uh, the project here is one hundred percent complete minus administrative contract and C D B G documentation that has to be completed. The contract was completed without any changes to scope or cost. Contract amount was one hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred ten dollars. We've previously paid the contractor eighty-four thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents, leaving the forty-four thousand, six hundred and fifteen owed to the contractor in the motion. He also noted that the, uh, the final payment to Matthews Construction is being held this month. As they haven't completed the paperwork for their final payment. I believe Matthews was the concrete contractor. So they expect that next month, and that's also C D B G. Uh, the final payment to Clearview Excavation is ready for decision by the Stormwater Authority. That's their, one of their items, right? This is covered by the Borough, the Stormwater Authority, Columbia Gas and Municipal Authority, splitting these costs. Well, I should say not solely the Borough, but the, uh, block grant program really. So any questions related to the engineer's report that we can try to address? All right, not, can someone please, uh, make that I'll make the motion to approve the application for payment number three final in the amount of forty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and fifteen cents to Y Electric LLC. Connection with the South Street C D B G site lighting project. Okay, we motion in a second. Any, uh, questions or comments about the lighting payment? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, very good. Chief Waddy.
Evening.
Evening.
You all have my report. I, uh, was out at the last week in July, so it's a little shorter than usual with, uh, the, the chief conference, uh, just out of the Poconos. And it was, uh, very informative this year. And not that it isn't always, but this year was, was, uh, I thought exceptionally well done. Good legal updates section, uh, really, of today, as a matter of fact, we were hearing about cases that were two days old that, uh, that had come out. And that's, that's, uh, pretty responsive from somebody that's, that's doing those updates. A lot of good management things. They did a kind of a case study on the, uh, the man, the framed man, uh, which was something, the Poconos area where the individual that had murdered, uh, a state trooper and shot another one outside the barracks had, had a shift change. That was forty-some days long from a management perspective. Very, very interesting and, and informative. And then the, uh, they always have exhibit results, a lot of conferences do, and there's a lot of good, uh, good things there. They have the most advanced technologies. There's some, uh, new computer software I'd like to look into that actually monitors your video, your videos, they're coming into the police department. It's kind of a, uh, a, uh, for, for issues. It puts, it's, it's adapted from the private sector with, with customer service and it's, uh, it, it, it seems very interesting and I have a call into them now to see how expensive or inexpensive it is at this point. We, uh, had a, as, as I put in there, uh, it was reported as a robbery. The individual, it said chased an individual down the alley and assaulted them. We have apprehended those individuals. It was not a robbery. It was, it was, uh, as, we believe as a result, we're fairly certain as a result of a, I'll use the term altercation, but a disagreement between, between, uh, neighbors. But, uh, once again, through some really good investigative work by, by patrol and, and our detectives who identified these folks and got warrants for them the same day. So I, I'm really happy with the performance there. Be happy to answer any questions if anybody has. The other one thing I wanted to point out, too, um, it just, it, it speaks to professionalism and training. If you noticed a few things in the, in the short blurbs about, you know, electric bikes and motorcycles and things like that, running from the police and officers ending that chase. They would get the identification things they needed. They know at that point, I don't need to chase this person anymore. I will identify him or her through other means. And they discontinued that chase. So they've been really brief chases and, and I'm, I'm just really happy with our officer's performance in that and not, not placing anybody in any more danger than they absolutely have to. We, uh, while at the conference, too, um, we had, uh, had a presentation about the Heroes Act, um, in Pennsylvania, which Pennsylvania has just passed. And there's grant dollars out there for retention and recruitment bonuses. I, the, uh, Attorney General's Office has set up a special email for that, for retention bonuses, their one-time retention bonuses paid out of that grant at no cost to the Borough. So I have actually initiated that contact. The grant's not opening yet, it doesn't open until sometime this month, but I didn't want to wait too long because there's a finite amount of money there. And, and there's a number of police departments in Pennsylvania, so I'd like to get in early and, and, uh, see if we can't get some type of retention bonuses for our, our officers that, through that grant. And it also, just as, as a side, we'll pay for some training and pay for some other things if we, we choose to, to apply.
Yeah, I, I mean, if we do that, I, I do think it's important that people that are on staff, we talk about retention, not just recruitment, that's often lost, I think, in many realms. The people that have really weathered the storm.
Yeah, there's, there's a specific amount of money that can be received per sworn member. And I haven't looked for per sworn full-time or per
How they do it.
X number hours or how they do it. There's a, I want to say it's, it's a one-time twelve-hundred-dollar retention bonus, but I, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that twelve-hundred-dollar figure. But, uh, anyway, I've, I've sent that email. Hopefully you got the process started and they will reply back.
Yeah, you get details, please let us know. We don't know if there's any other obligations and how that works. Mr. Lawver?
Uh, nothing to report.
Uh, do you have a question to ask the chief?
Oh, yeah, I'm still a law of the world. Any incidents at my favorite intersection?
No, sir, we have no crashes.
Thank you.
Howard Middle, is that?
I figured I'd ask him first, yeah, because I knew he'd want to ask. Howard and Middle.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Um, does anybody have any questions for the chief, comments?
Chief, I don't, I don't know who, uh, may be helping you with, with the grant writing, but I have a pretty good track record of grant writing and be happy to help you with it.
Okay, thank you.
If you need another set of eyes on it.
Appreciate that, thank you. Uh, I, I will say reference, uh, Mr. Lawver's question actually spurred a little bit. I'm a little concerned with the number of crashes we had again this month. It seems to me they're creeping up. We have seventeen crashes and, and if you look in there and you see last year we had ten, that's a pretty significant increase, so I, I, uh, just piques concern.
Do you have a common denominator for that, chief?
No, I don't, I don't, because there's no, there's no one, there's no one causation factor here, so, um... factor here, so we've had a couple DUI crashes, which you can always equate to DUI, but they, they seem to be all over the board. And then, yeah, I, I can probably say one, one particular factor is inattentiveness, which is a cause for any crash, whether you're going through a stop sign or speeding. It all boils down to somebody's inattentive.
Do the crashes occur at certain points of, times a day?
They're, they're all over again, and, and, you know, we, there's, they're all different times, all different locations. There doesn't seem to be any real heavy crash locations. I see often people complaining about Stratton and, and Middle right out here, and, and, you know, we do watch that, and we've had crashes there, but I can't say there's any more reported there than, than there are some other places. So I'm, I'm watching it, trying to figure, you know, if I can find something that, that's a causation factor, we might be able to do some concentrated enforcement of that particular issue and see if we can't slow it down.
Yeah, I ask because, you know, as a frequent pedestrian, I feel like the last month or so, drivers have been more and more aggressive, especially in and around the square. They seem to be hitting it at twenty-five to thirty-five miles an hour, really just trying to get through the crosswalks as fast as they can. And I, and I wonder if it's just frustration with traffic or?
Yeah, it, it seems to me in, in watching things, and then I try to get out a little more to somewhere, there's more people here. Yeah, today, I probably sat through three lights at Middle and Baltimore till I got through it and down towards the square, and I don't think that's an uncommon occurrence for some folks. I have sat on Steinware through multiple cycles of that light to get out onto Baltimore. So I, I think it is traffic. I think people are getting frustrated, and, and, you know, and they try to speed up, and they may go a little too fast. They may try to cheat through something they wouldn't before or wouldn't have, and it's, you know, it, it never pays.
Yep. Questions or comments for the chief? Yes.
For me, the most frightening intersection in town is Middle and Stratton. I think it's that stop sign is set so far back, people don't stop at that four-way stop sign. I even saw a school bus go through there without stopping one time. It was empty, but I, I really see it often that they run that.
That is, that issue is partly caused by the larger truck vehicles because we have to sit those stop signs back so far and those stop bars back so far so bigger vehicles can make those turns.
A lot of times, people don't obey those white lines.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, that, that, that's, that is a, a really big issue that I see a lot, is people don't stop at the stop bars, and especially for the red lights in town. They'll, they'll drive right up to the intersection, and that's just, that's a red light violation, frankly. And, now, I, yeah, we have, we have issues with those, but those setbacks where those stop bars are, people stopping back at those are for the bigger vehicles so they can make those turns.
You're, you're absolutely right. That is a terrible intersection. I think what it is, is motorists who are taking Middle Street because they want to avoid the traffic on Route Thirty, and so they just hit those stop signs, both that one and the one at Liberty, and they barely stop. They want to just keep plowing right through.
Yeah, no, I, I notice it a lot with traffic coming to and from the school. People that are trying to avoid getting onto Baltimore Street, so they come there and in the same Liberty and there, that, that's just kind of a, it's been like that as long as I can remember.
I, I do it myself. If I'm coming through town to go from, to the other side of town, I don't go out on York. I stay on Middle and go all the way down and make the turn.
Very difficult to address.
But you stop at the stop signs.
Oh, absolutely. No, I don't do that. I'm the chief on it.
No, it is, it is difficult to address. There's not a lot of great opportunities of where, where you sit to observe that. It's kind of challenging.
Let's, yeah, that, the, the Middle Stratton is, is a good, I mean, it's, it's next to where, where are we going to sit to enforce that?
Physical constraints are difficult.
It's kind of luck whether we get somebody, because it's, we're sitting there and somebody does it in front of us, and, and, and I would agree, Judy. I've watched crashes there. In my police car, I've watched crashes. So it's.
Any other questions or comments for the chief? Pass one to Officer Hilliard. I think National Line Out was, was pretty great. You know, we can't really alter the, the time of year that it occurs. I did notice a lot of the community partners had a lot of water out, which was great, but I think that the kids responded well to a lot of things there, and the horses and so forth, so please pass that along.
Charles put it out. I think we get the same, kind of the same participation every year, no matter where we have it or how we do it. And I think we would have had more this year possibly, but it was just so dang hot.
It was incredibly hot.
It was oppressively hot.
Like it was almost, yeah, hazardous.
I do appreciate everybody coming and, and helping out and.
Yeah, a lot of good community partners there. It was nice to see.
And I, I'd like to point out, we had the, the crew from the USS Gettysburg up this year. Nobody didn't know. They, they've sent us several emails now, the mayor and I. I think they've had a wonderful time. I don't know how many people actually talked to them. I think we should, we could probably advertise that portion a little better, but they, they had them last up here, coming to that, and we're just happy to be invited up, so.
Great. Yeah, I think I spoke with, I think it's their head liaison, the chaplain there. He's getting ready to turn over in four months, so we'll have a new, a new liaison there, but. Yeah, I told him, I said, that's a relationship that exists, has existed for a long time, but it's, you know, it's not always the focus, so we're happy to see them, happy to see them up. All right. Any other questions or comments for the chief? If not, Mr. Gable must though.
I have nothing to add. We have several motions on the agenda, but I have nothing else.
In addition to my written report, I just wanted to highlight a couple things that Lisa Engstead, the Borough's Tax Collector, has announced her hours. So just a, a community reminder that her, her times are listed on the Borough's website on the calendar. You can collect that from the homepage. But just for our purposes tonight, Thursday, August eighteenth, five to seven PM, she'll have office hours here in the municipal building. Saturday, August twentieth, nine AM to eleven AM. Tuesday, August twenty-third, five PM to seven PM. Thursday, August twenty-fifth, five PM to seven PM. Saturday, August twenty-seventh, nine AM to eleven AM. Monday, August twenty-ninth, five PM to seven PM. And Wednesday, August thirty-first, five PM to seven PM. A motion appears under our Agenda tab. Our pension actuaries have completed their calculations for the minimum municipal obligation towards our union, our uniform and non-uniform pension funds, so police uniform pension fund minimum municipal obligation will be one hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred twenty-five thousand in 2023, and for ninety, or for non-uniform, one hundred four thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars. Wanted to remind council also that there are two conferences that staff always encourages council members to participate in. There's a lot of really good sessions provided on municipal governance and how to achieve best practices with municipal, municipal government. The first conference is October sixth through the ninth. That's the Pennsylvania Municipal League Annual Conference, and that will be in Pittsburgh this year. But we also have the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Conference Leadership Conference. That's actually here in Gettysburg at the Wyndham, October fourteenth to the sixteenth. So if anyone from council is interested in attending one or both of those conferences, we do have a line item in the budget that would take care of that. Please let me know by the end of this month so that I can take advantage of our early bird reservations and registrations so that we can get a discount on that. And finally, before we get to the motions, I just wanted to highlight the, the financial conditions as we are more than halfway through the year. And, excuse me. In the general fund, we're doing quite well this year so far with revenues exceeding expenditures just over one point five million dollars year-to-date. Now, we have not had some really large expenses that we usually get in October. That's when our debt service is, is due, and that's going to be well over six hundred thousand dollars. But to date, we're, we're in a good financial position. To recap that, currently liquid cash in the Borough's checking account, we have three point two, three eight million dollars. And then, as of this month, August twenty-twenty-two, we'll complete our twelfth CD. We have been putting seventy-nine thousand dollars every month for the last twelve months into a CD, which is now a segregated reserve account. That will total nine hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, which is actually the minimum threshold in council's fund balance policy. And so the, the intent is to let those CDs continue, just to continue to roll over every month, and eventually, assuming that council does not tap into those reserve dollars, eventually we'll get to twenty percent and twenty-five percent as interest accumulates in those accounts of your general fund budget. Just, again, just to reiterate that the Borough is, is, is in a significantly better financial position than it found itself, say, five years ago or so. That said, all totaled funds, that would be the general fund, fire services fund, community development block grant fund, capital projects, debt service, capital reserve, liquid fuels, revolving loan, and the ARPA fund. The Borough currently has eight point four two five million dollars in its accounts, much of which is what you would call committed or obligated funds. So you can't just randomly spend that money in different things. There are actually programmatic, programmatic things that are required. But there is three point two million in the general fund, which is your operating fund. With that, I will defer to council to go through your motions, unless you have questions on my report.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Gable, before we start through? All right, if not, I have a motion for the bills, please.
Make a motion to accept all bills and payrolls as presented?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about the bills or payrolls this month? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, next is our motion for the minimum municipal obligation.
Make a motion to approve the minimum municipal obligation, MMO, for the Gettysburg Police Pension Plan in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars, and the non-uniform pension plan in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars for 2023.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about the minimal municipal obligation? I would note that our pension plans here at the Borough are well-funded. I know some years ago, there was a, a lot of concern about things at the state level here at the Borough. We have kept up over the decades. All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next motion is for the firebox maps, and I would note that Brad Cometh from GIS is here.
Did you guys have any questions?
He is here. If you have questions about the, I thought we received this last month. Candidly, I thought this was an informational item for us. Doesn't really involve a lot in the Borough, but the, because of the way the Borough is essentially one area from a fire response standpoint, but the county has gone to a, essentially by address or by parcel.
We're switching to a parcel-based system throughout the county. Like, there's not, there's a minimal effect actually.
We see very minimal impact, yeah.
But there's a little bit on the south side towards where the cemetery is that, I believe it's, it's a one-one.
There's some places where, like, it's a park service or, or someone owns a large parcel that may come or go.
Minimal changes in the borough.
Yeah, in some parks of the county, we have areas where we would drive through someone else's response territory to get into our response territory. So this kind of helps address that and, and other concerns.
Yeah, it, it basically just fixes some things that we noticed going along.
But the Borough is probably the simplest area in this regard that you probably see.
The Boroughs were pretty easy, yeah.
Yeah.
You were not easiest, but yet you were one of the easiest. McSherry's County had one change.
It's fair. Look out for McSherry's. So someone make that motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the 2022 municipal firebox maps as submitted by the Adams County Department of Emergency Services.
Second. Okay, a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about the map change? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next is our non-uniform union agreement to execute that contract.
Make a motion to authorize entry into an execution of a new four-year collective bargaining agreement commencing on January one, 2023, between the Borough of Gettysburg and the International Brotherhood of the Teamsters Local Number Seven Seven Six Labor Union for the Gettysburg Borough Full-Time and Regular Part-Time Non-Professional Employees.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about the non-uniform contract? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is for the preparation of the tax credit, or tax credit ordinance for firefighters.
I'll make a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare an ordinance pursuant to Pennsylvania Act One Seven Two of 2016 as amended, authorizing certain tax critics against tax liability imposed by the annual tax on real estate and the tax on earned income as levied by the Borough of Gettysburg as incentives for the use and benefit of certain individuals who qualify as active volunteers for the provision of fire protection services in the Borough by and through the Gettysburg Fire Department.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments about the preparation?
Yeah, I, I have a comment. I want to say thank you to you, Wes, for bringing this to our attention, that there is some tax relief we can offer people who are willing to put it all on the line for their neighbors. Thanks for bringing this to our attention and helping us to accomplish this.
Yeah, we discussed this at the work session. I think a lot of this is, I'm hoping to keep some people in town who are in that step, really getting ready to purchase homes, and this would be a, an incentive for them to stay in the Borough, which would be a timely response. Miss, they'll all be abstaining from these motions as we go through the process. All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the PML.
I'll make a motion to appoint Borough Manager Charles Gable as the voting delegate to the Pennsylvania Municipal League Leadership Summit on October sixth through ninth, 2022.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any questions or comments?
I would, if I may, just, the, the purpose of this is, to the Pennsylvania Municipal League Conference, every year they have what's called the Resolutions Committee, which is a series of initiatives by various municipalities across the state, which would advocate for changes in state legislation that would be favorable to municipal governments. And so that's what this is, is doing. I would be representing council's position on those proposed resolutions at the Resolution Committee, and you'll be presented those as the conference gets closer.
Sad to see, we'll see those probably towards the end of September.
That's correct.
So, has everyone's, I'm trying to think, has everyone seen these before? Basically, we'll get a position paper on a number of different items, and it's always interesting because the Borough is one of the smaller members, I think, staff-wise anyway, and also probably population of PML. So there are things we'll find that are not really advantageous to the Borough of Gettysburg that may be proposed by the areas. And then there are some things that are quite unanimous, like radar.
Right.
Pretty much always unanimous. PML goes and advocates, and somehow in the process, the legislature just never quite gets, quite gets it done. So, questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do you have a report for Main Street? I think we received the written report in the packet. Would you like to speak at all?
Yeah, it's in the packet. Jill's still in Iowa. She had a death of her family, but she will be returning tomorrow.
Yep. Certainly appreciate seeing the, the work with the Holfman Trust. All right, recreational authority, Mr. Carter.
I've heard from Erin Pedigree, our executive director at the Gettysburg Area Recreation Authority. Some updates quickly. The Rec Park purchased new tractor and utility cart to replace the older equipment. Erin is currently receiving estimates from contractors for a DCNR grant that she is working on and will be applying in 2023, hoping to replace the older swings and add some new playground equipment. older swings and add some new playground equipment. They are hoping to hire a new maintenance supervisor this fall for next year. Our current supervisor, Steve Williams, is retiring in November. If anyone knows anyone interested, please have them contact Erin Pedigree at 717-334-2028. And she has a question that I'm going to throw out to the council to consider and possibly the solicitor to know. Do we know if the borough has a license to play movies to the public?
I'm working on that. I was.
I was hoping you would have the answer.
She did call us on Friday.
Fantastic. I think that's a great idea, and let's move on it.
Yeah, that would be a nice idea.
Wonderful idea for the Rec Park, yeah.
I had received a communication from a constituent about a splash pad at Garen. I did tell them that it is on the master plan, and it is in the capital improvement plan, and everything kind of comes in its order. But that's gotten a lot more focus, I think, in the last few years with, it's just kind of a safer alternative to a pool. Sure. Yeah. All right, GMA, Burger.
Yes, sir. Big news is that the Harris Ridge Water Tower was shut down. Many of you saw that in the paper. There was a public hearing on July 14th, and the Cumberland Township Planning Commission voted not to approve the proposed text amendment. It would have been 175 feet. Then the township supervisors on the 26th voted against it, and both of those were unanimous. I know that the new superintendent of the park did speak out in both of those meetings. GMA, we're not sure what we're going to do. You know, but we're going to provide, you know, the needs in the most cost-effective way, but it's back to the drawing board and probably involve pumping stations, I'm sure, but.
They keep building and occupying houses there no matter what.
Yeah.
And we keep going to them for gas leaks.
Yeah.
Which reminded me of the time we were up there on, I guess, High Street, and it seemed like they rushed it. It leaked at the load of meter. But yeah, that's what, every time we go out there, I'm like, this is interesting. There will be no water here. But somehow we got the cart before the horse, because there's going to be a whole lot of development without the water to support it. Not reliable gravity fetch. All right, the bid, it's Butterfield.
Yes, there was no meeting in July, but this Thursday, there will be an interesting meeting. The town guides have devised a new walking tour featuring and spotlighting Steinware. So on Thursday morning, members of bid will gather, take the tour, enjoy lunch graciously provided by Dobbin House, and then have the regular bid meeting. And thank you to Wendy Flax for her work in organizing that. I think it's a good idea because the merchants will have little inside stories to share with the guide, and they will also be made aware of what will be featured in this particular tour. So I'm interested in hearing all about that.
The cog, pardon me, the Boroughs Association, Mayor Frey.
Thank you. The last two meetings will be held for the year 2022 on September 19th and November 21st, and it's just been a quiet summer. Nothing's really going on.
Okay. All right, the cog, best to Mrs. Butterfield.
Yes, there was no meeting in July, but President Scotty Bolton was at our Farmers' Market Municipalities Day next door to the mayor's desk, and he was able to explain to people what the heck cog stands for. There was no meeting of the Collaboration Committee. I seem to be the only member of that committee who was not on vacation, and that's indicative of where my life is.
We did have a very good presence here from the borough at that Farmers' Market Day, planning and police. We had a good presence there. All right, the overdose, pardon me, ACPO, sorry, I keep skipping one ahead.
Yes, ACPO, at this July meeting, they passed the Long Range Transportation Plan, and that long-range plan identifies the county's long-term transportation needs and strategies for improving the transportation network. It also lists future funding allocations for highway, bridge, safety, and active transportation projects for the next 28 years, which is really amazing and interesting. They passed the tip at the last meeting, and it showed an increased budget from 33 to 41 million dollars. There was an interesting bridge update, apparently changing the grade for a particular bridge from fair to poor increases eligibility for funding. And I'm going to think about that every time I cross one of the local Adams County bridges in the future. The transit report for May showed 8,850 trips, and they spent 104,000 on gas. As gas goes up, our transportation issues face difficulty.
All right, overdose awareness, Mr. Moon.
Nothing to report.
Okay, trail feasibility, Mr. Burger.
Yeah, I did talk to Dennis Hicathier a couple of weeks ago, and the reason why we haven't really heard anything, even though the trail study was completed about a year ago, is that the beginning segment of the trails is supposed to start at the National Park Visor Center, and they're doing their own study. So, when I talked to Dennis, I thought, well, maybe we should think of an alternative starting point, because I could see that going on for, you know, for a while. And just recent developments, you know, no road races, no, you know, they're really clamping down on usage of the park for public things like that. So that's why there hasn't been a lot of development. But I'll keep you updated as things come through.
Yeah, the trail system in the park's incredibly equine-focused.
Yeah.
Not a lot going on for, bicycles are basically restricted to where cars go. That's basically what there is. That's pretty much it. And that gets it interesting. Habby, Ms. Lawson.
Nothing to report, this one.
Okay, recycling, it's Butterfield.
Yes, as Chris mentioned earlier, we'll have our electronic device turn-in event on September 17th, excuse me, collecting TVs and anything related to computers. As I said, we already have 23 people signed up, and my August article will focus exclusively on that event. Carly and Karen and Sarah helped with flyers for the event at the Farmers' Market and at the Night Out, and I posted them on the bulletin boards of Kenny's and at the post office. So we should start getting some more registrations soon.
Okay, very good. Any elected officials' comments this evening? Mayor, yes?
I attended the Pennsylvania State Mayor's Conference in Lancaster. Made a lot of great connections. I was a foreign exchange student in Turkey when I was in high school. It helped me. Not saying supporting, but I met Dr. Oz at Go Phil, because he looked at me and I said merhaba, hello in Turkish, and he was like, whoa. So I said, I'm from Gettysburg. He goes, I love Gettysburg. He was just there the former weekend. So I just thought that was interesting. Also at the conference, they talked about hiring police officers, and I gave all the information to the chief of police, attracting females and minorities, Latinos. It was a really good presentation. I got the man's card. He's the police chief of Chambersburg. He knows about it, but we may meet with him to talk about that. They also talk about, they spoke about using drones in the police force and how effective they can be instead of sending live people into a possibly armed building that you can send a drone in to see where the armed person is so that people can't get harmed. Very interesting. Gave him the information. It was the effort of the police department. Just found out a lot of good things about different grants, applying for grants. It was a very informative conference. Made a lot of contacts with mayors, and they can't wait to come, so I can show them Gettysburg for the Borough Association Conference. So that was it. Also, he didn't bring it up. There was a burst of a three-part series in the Gettysburg Connection. Did anybody see it? He gave an interview, not four, he said three.
I thought it said four in the connection when I read it.
Anyway, one police officer. And so it was a very good article. And I, is there anything else? I think that's just about it. So it was all fun. And that was the Mayor's Association Office.
Hello?
And, excuse me, I will be going to PML in Pittsburgh, the Pennsylvania Municipal League.
All right, comments, Mr. Carter?
I just want to thank our assistant borough manager and secretary, Sarah Stoll, for this month reaching 33 years working for the Borough of Gettysburg.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here so long, keeping us all together.
All right, other elected officials' comments? Public comment. Give yourself the five minutes. If not, the folks at Waste Management did leave. I'm going to notice that there were more than Tootsie Rolls in here.
Steph has meetings here once in a while.
I promised to do this. Ah, yes, candy. Candy for everyone. Your trash might not be picked up.
But we will have candy.
But you can have candy. All right. With that, we adjourn to executive session.